I got six o'clock. We good? All right, I got six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get this study session February eighteenth, twenty twenty five. City battleground city council to order. We have some representatives from I B R here, Mr. Greg Johnson, Mr. Frank Green, I believe, are leading us up with the presentation. So hand it over to you folks. Floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and others. I'm Greg Johnson. I'm the Interstate Bridge Replacement Program Administrator, and we're gonna. Frank Green and myself are gonna run through a series of slides to level set where we're at with the program. So let's go to the next. So this is our. Our program schedule that we show everyone. This program was revived in twenty nineteen when. The mayors of or the governors of each state came together and said, this project is too important to lay dormant after the Columbia River Crossing project. Went into abeyance. So they dubbed it the Interstate Bridge Replacement Program, and the team got started. I came on in. The summer of twenty twenty to help lead the program to get this five mile corridor built. So we are currently in that green box that shows the environmental process. And we are in what's called a supplemental environmental impact statement. It is supplemental because. The previous project of Columbia River Crossing did get to a record of decision, and that record of decision is the federal okay to start construction. And they were ready to put shovels in the ground back in twenty thirteen and. The state of Washington declined to fund their portion of it. So the project went on hiatus and was restarted in twenty nineteen. So. We are doing a supplement to that environmental document, and we just recently had our. Draft supplemental environmental impact statement released, and we had a sixty day public comment period, which we received. Close to ninety eight hundred comments from the public. So we are currently going through those as we are now stepping into the final phases. Of the environmental process. But you can see there's a lot of other things going on. We have design. Or design efforts that are continuing. Permitting is one of the huge things that we are trying to make sure we are doing right and timely. We are also continuing to have public outreach events to get people up to speed on what this project is and what it is not. We have consultation with ten federally recognized tribes. So we are meeting with. Tribal governments on a monthly basis to make sure they are up to speed on everything that's happening on this program. Last but not least, and I think Frank is gonna talk about some of the some of the funding and grants that we have received for the program. But needless to say, this is a very complex undertaking. We have ten partners. Two of which are sitting here at the table with us, RTC and C Tran, but we have five on this side of the river, five south of the river. And it's the two DOTs, both the city of Vancouver, the city of Portland. RTC along with Metro, their counterpart in Oregon. They have C Tran, TriMet, their count, which is the counterpart transit agency in. Oregon, and we also have both ports, Port of Vancouver and the Port of Port. So once again, very complex undertaking. So let's go to the next slide. So this project, as I said, is not a new start. This is a building upon what work was done during the Columbia River Crossing. Although it seems at times like we started from scratch, we are actually building on a great body of work that was done. So. In twenty twenty two, we developed what was called a modified locally preferred alternative. And these are the basic elements of what is being studied in that National Environmental Policy Act or NEPA planning phase. So this this modified locally preferred alternative identified. Number one, that we have a five mile corridor that needs to be addressed. We have. A a bridge in the middle that is hundred and eight years old that needs to be replaced. We also have. A lack of high capacity transit in the corridor. So we are actually connecting with C Tran system. And at that time, it was decided that light rail would be the mode of high capacity transit. So that was a agreed upon decision with the ten partners. That I spoke of earlier. So we are this modified locally preferred alternative. It's what's. Being studied, what we are taking forward into the final phases of this environmental process. Let's go to the next slide, please. So this is a visual of what that modified locally preferred alternative. It's a very busy slide. But needless to say, it's a five mile corridor, seven interchanges, and a huge bridge in the middle. We also, once again, are extending light rail from its terminus at Expo Center. In North Portland to go across the river to end at Evergreen Street in the city of Vancouver. We've looked at elements of modernizing the ramps to make this whole corridor flow better. We're looking at what are called auxiliary lanes. That are going to be constructed so folks can, as you're getting on or off the freeway, folks can sort themselves in a in a more. Reasonable manner. Right now, you know, if you're coming northbound and you want to get off on SR fourteen, you're going from a live lane of traffic, jumping onto that ramp. And so all of these things will be modernized and make this entire corridor flow better and more safely. So I'm gonna turn it over to my partner, Frank.
Thank you, Frank Green. Sorry about that. Assistant Program Administrator. And as Greg mentioned, you know, the the modified likely preferred alternative was, you know, what the the program worked with partners to get to to really study what needs to move forward. We're gonna focus a little bit with some of these slides on the transit investments. I know that's been a point of discussion lately. So this slide kind of outlines what the the transit investments as part of the overall whole program are. As Greg mentioned, it's approximately a one point nine mile extension of of the current light rail that ends at Expo today. Across the the river into Vancouver. That includes three new stations. So there'd be a station on Hayden Island and then two stations in Washington, one near the waterfront and one at Evergreen. Some of the conversations building upon the past, as as Greg mentioned, is, you know, really the question is what's changed since the CRC program had done its study? You know, I think a lot of the work that C Tran has done to kind of add BRT to their kind of their routes that they're doing. Was an important part of this conversation because where light rail previously in the CRC used to go into downtown Vancouver, that's a lot of the area where the BRT, the vine is going today. So it's coming down. Washington, it's going up. Well, I think it goes up Main Street, but also potentially, you know, whatever a couple it would be, but it they their their lines go through and by Evergreen. And so that's how kind of the decision was made. A little bit of a difference between the previous proposal and the new proposal of running a light rail along the I five alignment to Evergreen. And that really allows kind of the two major transit systems here in our region that are on either side of the river to to be able to connect. So you can see a lot of bus rapid transit that could connect to the light rail. There's also potential for additional park and rides. Park and rides are sometimes a tool with transit that can, you know, bring riders to some of these stations. But as I mentioned, I think we we will see a huge amount of ridership using the the BRT to kind of that LRT connection. And then another key piece of this is is something that we currently are coordinating with C Tran today on is express bus service. Today, we do have bus on shoulder capacity. So when there's backups on the freeway, C Trans going southbound specifically can use the bus on shoulder. Now, that only gets so far. It gets pretty much right to just just north of the existing bridge because then it goes down to where there's no shoulders on the freeway. So with this investment that we're proposing, we'll be able to also allow that bus on shoulder to go completely through this five mile corridor of investments that we're making. And and utilize that shoulder in the event that there is anything that, you know, whether it's additional congestion in the future or incidents that they can. Can can operate their express bus services area. So it's really a combination of extending light rail to connect to the BRT system as well as adding some express bus. You know, as we were going to the modified locally preferred alternative, we were doing a lot of outreach. As you can see from this slide here, we were doing, you know, open houses. We were doing online surveys. We also did a poll. You know, really, really trying to target and ask questions of of what people's thoughts of these different transit modes and even all the investments. So it's not just focused on transit. It was focused on kind of all the investments. And as you can see, I think one of the one of the things we did see from that poll, which is some of the information on the bottom of the slide, is that, you know, there is support, you know, for light rail to be the component on this program. You know, obviously, the closer you get to, you know, downtown Vancouver or into Oregon, you know, some of the the survey results had a higher higher positive response. But Clark County as a whole was sixty one percent from the poll that we did was in favor of light rail. And and as I said, you know, with that city kind of core being being more of the focus. So that that helped, I think, those ten partners that Greg had mentioned earlier kind of make the decision that the modified LPA should include kind of a combination of extending the light rail transit to Evergreen, but also that express bus. Service being provided. The importance of the modified LPA really, as Greg said, we're studying that in our environmental work, but also. It allowed us to begin pursuing some of our federal grants that that we've we've been pursuing. We did get a kind of a bolster to the program when both states in their legislative sessions, both in, I think it was, it's, I'm gonna forget the years now, twenty one and twenty three or twenty two and twenty three. Identified a billion dollars for each program. That that billion dollars also came with tolling authorization for the program to fund the capital part of construction. So the 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 program, you know, i- is estimated in twenty twenty three to cost somewhere between five and seven and a half billion. The reason for that range is it's a cost, a risk based estimate that tries to look at the probabilities of hitting certain things like risk or schedule. It is projected to year of expenditure, which means it's not an estimate in twenty three. It was assuming we're building the bridge, for example, in twenty twenty seven through twenty thirty two, it would project what the cost would try to be at that time. And so with that that cost range, we had tar, we had estimated that we need to target somewhere in the six billion dollars for funding. So with the. Two billion that, one billion that came from each state, two billion total, and the one and a quarter billion from tolling authorization, we knew that targeting federal grants was going to be very important. So you can see here on this slide, there's three significant federal grants that we're targeting. There's one that's called the mega grant, which we were awarded. And we have since executed that grant agreement. It's six hundred million dollars from from US DOT. The funds from that grant can be spent toward the capital investments for really anything within the program, so transit elements or highway elements. The second grant is the bridge investment grant. It's a one point five billion dollar grant that we also have been awarded and and executed with our federal partners. That is a grant really kind of focusing, as Greg had said, on the bridge, the middle part of the program over the river. And then the third grant is an FTA capital investment grant. It's a different process than those first two grants. The first two grants, they put out a notice that there's an opportunity, and you submit an application, and based on the merits of the program, you know, they'll award or not. The merits of this program being the modified LPA that is the truly multimodal solution we've identified. The third pro, the the third grant, though, is it's a stepped process. So it's it's a process that takes several years working with your federal partners to ensure that throughout that process, you remain competitive and also have a rating. That can get you ultimately to that federal grant. So we were accepted into the first stage, which is project development. We're working our way right now to the second stage, which would be called engineering. And then the kind of timeframe to get that grant would be in the twenty twenty eight timeframe is our current schedule. That's when you'd get the full funding grant for that. It's just a it's a different process for that grant. And then, yeah, Greg, you'll take this one.
So so one of the questions that come up that comes up is, what if we say, no, we're gonna change our mind on the modified locally preferred alternative? We're gonna do something different than than consensus was back in twenty twenty two. So we know that if we say that we're not gonna do light rail, that we're gonna go to bus rapid transit or or not have. A transit component, we would have to go back into this environmental document. And. At this point, the estimates are anywhere from a year and a half to two and a half years to get back to this point of where we are now. And that one and a half to two and a half years, what that means for escalation and inflation, it would knock us out of our proposed. In water work window that we are shooting for to start the bridge in twenty twenty seven. So as we get moved out of that, there's approximately a three hundred million dollar escalation and inflation cost on the back end of. That program that would be due to this delay. We know that even if we were to say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna go differently, we don't know if we could change and get the consensus that reached this. Agreement earlier. I see a question.
Yes, I just have a quick question for you. When this was brought up for the survey or however you came to this conclusion? What were people asked? Were they asked for light rail versus bus rapid transit, or was it just bus or light rail or nothing?
So, yeah, we can get to the exact questions, but at the. So, yeah, we can get to the exact questions, but at the time, the the partners at the ESG, the Executive Steering Group had identified that that, you know, would potentially be the alternative. So we tested that alternative. We asked, you know, do you support light rail on the program as part of the MLPA? I don't have the exact wording of the question in my head, but I know the 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 questions and the and the the survey results are on our website and we can absolutely share that with the the council if you'd like to see that.
Yeah, I'm just curious if people were given the option between the two. It seems like they would weigh more for bus rapid transit locally than light rail. So I'm just curious.
One, one of the issues with bus rapid transit, and it is, it's a a popular way to move a lot of people. Right now, bus rapid transit would not have a logical termini in Portland. Right now, light rail ends once again half a mile south of the state line. And taking bus rapid transit in on the freeway, it would be in the same traffic. Eventually, once it got out of our program limits, would be in the same traffic and backups as everybody else, whereas light rail, those vehicles can carry more people and more efficiently move people through the corridor without traffic impacts.
So you would have to build the tracks from Delta Park to Jansen Beach and then to the bridge? Is it in the Expo Center?
So from Expo Center, yeah, we would build across what's called North Portland Harbor to the stop on Hayden Island. Then it would become a part of the the big bridge that crosses. And then it would separate once we got on the North Shore of Vancouver into its own alignment, running right alongside I five.
Okay, and then if this bus rapid transit would have to have northbound and southbound lanes, this could use just one designated lane because it can go both directions, right?
So bus rapid transit, if if put in its own guideway and its own separated guideway, that generally is not a supported activity. We've talked to our Federal Transit Administration, so the amount of dollars we could get to build that guideway would not match what we could get with light rail. But generally, if you have a a separated guideway, yeah, it would run, but then it would end up in at the Expo Center. And there are no bus connections at the Expo Center. It is purely light rail. So these were some of the considerations that went into making the decision, the efficiency that you can move more people per hour. People talk about the operations and maintenance costs, but that's also looking at running trains at a rate that far exceeds what bus would be would be serving in this corridor.
Okay, thank you.
So.
So I think it's it's good segue to what Greg just said, you know, one of the, one of the clear pieces that the program's working on, I think with partners right now is is identifying the transit O and M costs. As part of that grant process that I mentioned that pays, you know, for the capital portion of the program, so to construct it, you do have to be able to share with them a transit O and M plan. And so right now, as you can see on the slide in front of you, there's still a lot of details that remain to understand what the 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 final cost for the O and M will be. But, you know, based on the, as Greg had mentioned, the the proposal right now, I think getting to your question a little bit, you know, light rail will extend from Expo. It'll be, once it leaves from Expo, it'll pretty much be elevated the entire time as it goes over North Portland Harbor. There'll be a station on Hayden Island, it'll be elevated up and over the river and then really elevated till it gets to Evergreen, just because of the the geometry and the alignments. So part of O and M is running the the vehicles, the trains themselves, so operating them, but it's also, you know, maintaining and inspecting the bridges, maintaining, operating and security at the stations. If there's park and rides, how do you, you know, operating the park and rides, things like that. So this this overall O and M cost that's that's being developed is really all inclusive of not just, you know, the trains themselves. But as Greg said, you know, right now, the trains, you know, we're estimating would be running, you know, every six or seven minutes. So that is a portion of the the operations and maintenance costs. And I know that's that's a a big discussion right now. As as I said, the the capital investment program grant, you know, as we're, as we're, as you're kind of going toward getting that full funding grant agreement in a few years is really when we have to have that plan, I think, as a region identified about how we're funding the O and M portion of of the the cost. And so.
So the question of of why now? We are, we are in a unique position with the IBR program. Right now, we have identified and have five point five billion dollars committed to this program. This has never been the case for the previous program. And this is unique across the country to have this many dollars committed at this stage of of the program. So this having this program move forward means that we're going to have access to bringing those dollars here to this region. If we go in a different manner, those things may be put at jeopardy. So this is, this is one of the the highest freight sections of the freeway that you will see on I five until you get down into California near the larger ports or up near the port of Seattle. So eleven percent of the traffic that goes through here every day are trucks. And so this project is, or this program is slated to make improvements that will make freight movements that much easier. The bridge carries a hundred and thirty two million dollars worth of goods every day. And so we are, we are focused on trying to get this project done. The question comes of, well, what if we, what if we take that money and put it into a third bridge? So it's a good question, and there should be a conversation around the third bridge, but this is not that conversation. Number one, you don't have a federal nexus for a third bridge. This is the interstate. So the federal government is invested in this corridor. And secondly, you don't have a willing partner on the south side of the river to say, yeah, we're going to build a third bridge anywhere within the the boundaries of Portland or Monoma County. So this idea that, you know, you could take this money and switch it over to another project is is a false thought. But with a span that just turned a hundred and eight years old on Valentine's Day, as a matter of fact, the bridges are in a maintainable shape. ODOT and WashDOT combined to to make sure that the bridge is safe. But once again, we do not know if it will survive in a Cascadia subduction where that moves in a significant way. Now, you will hear some of the gadflies who follow the program saying, oh, my God, they're fear mongering. But we know that on average, every three hundred and fifty years, that fault moves. Now, we don't know how much it's going to move, but are we going to risk the the economic viability and the safety of this region on folks who have not studied the issue? We talked to the to the folks who do this for a living, and they say there is a movement of that Cascadia subduction coming in the next number of years. Now, I can't tell you when it's going to happen, but it will happen. And this region not being prepared for it, meaning that if that bridge fails, we now take a hundred and forty thousand people cross that bridge every day and try and send them across I two oh five. And that means three hundred thousand people flooding across streets that are not meant to get to I two oh five to try and make that crossing. So once again, this is a a problem that is not of of manmade making, but it is something that we can solve if we have the the fortitude to get this done. If this project goes away, my my opinion, I've worked on infrastructure across this country. The next time we talk about this, that bridge will be sitting at the bottom of the river and folks will be wondering what happened. So we think that not the the negatives of this, but the positives of what this bridge program can do. We're looking at if we invest five point nine billion, which is the current estimate. This brings eleven billion worth of the investment. We know that for every billion dollars of construction, we create five thousand jobs. So this is something that is going to be a boon to this area. This program will take approximately between ten to fifteen years to construct. And that means that we are going to be here reaping the benefits of that investment for a number of years during construction. And then the spin offs from the the transit oriented development in the area is also going to be very powerful for this region. So once again, we think that this was a good investment. We're folks think that we have, you know, a bias towards any one of these. We do not. We are transportation professionals. This is what we do. And we've looked at the analysis, and right now, the analysis has told us that light rail is the right high capacity transit choice. And getting this bridge replaced is one of the the highest things that we can be doing for this region going into the future. So with that, that's the end of our presentation, and we will take any questions or concerns you may have.
Before we open to questions, if just the other two gentlemen introduce yourselves and your roles for the record, and then all of the council, please chime in with questions. And all four of you, please, as questions come forward, if there's something you feel like you can add, you know, open forum. So you're here because we want to hear your thoughts.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Scott Patterson. I'm the Deputy Chief Executive Officer at C-Trans.
And good evening. Apologize for sliding in right at six o'clock. My name is Matt Ransom. I'm the Executive Director of the Regional Transportation Council. We're the Regional Transportation Planning Agency. And currently, Mayor McCoy is Vice Chair to the Board that I serve to.
Counsel, questions? It's got to be a few.
I do. I have a question. What I was wondering is, do we have any information, data or commentary information on businesses who were looking at coming into the area and made a choice not to because of the situation, concerns about their product being able to be transported or concerns about safety of their employees? Or I'm just curious if there's been any negative commerce around that.
So we we've been having a running conversation with identity Clark County, one of the larger business representatives, as well as the Oregon Business Association. I'll probably get the acronym wrong. But they are tremendously supportive for those very same reasons. They realize that without good infrastructure, businesses are not willing to to make future investments in an area where there's a possibility that the infrastructure will fail. So they have been tremendously supportive. Those grant applications that we took to Washington DC came with hundreds of letters of support from the business community on those very same issues.
If if I could supplement that response, so I've been doing planning and and city work here in this community for twenty some odd years. And the Regional Economic Development Council, the Columbia River Economic Development Council, their current president, Jen Baker. On many occasions, I've heard her and their job is to do recruitment and recruitment visits, supporting members like the city and and the county that are part of the coalition. And one of the principal questions building or observations that building on Greg's statement is, what is your regional infrastructure? So it's not just like what we have here in Clark County. It's not how well the streets are laid out, so on and so forth. It's the big stuff. The Portland International Airport, the the freight hubs, Wilsonville, what's becoming the Ridgefield Junction area, the two port facilities. And time and again, Jen, I've heard her say this in prior presidents to the CREDC, that one of the inquiries is, do you have the infrastructure needed to support our growth? And time and again, the I five bridge, because it's an obvious constraint. I mean, we all drive it, we know it, it's a derelict bridge, it's a hundred years old, yada, yada. That weighs on people's minds. And when they look at pouring tens of millions or maybe hundreds of millions in investment and and a new facility manufacturing or just investment relocation, the signals that we send, the kind of infrastructure that we're investing in or the plan to invest in infrastructure, recognizing it doesn't all happen at once, are important. So I think in answer to your response, it does. It does affect people and people are asking that question. And what's important about the I five corridor, and I think it was said, so, you know, viewed from space, it's the center of the region. When you think about it, you know, the, here in Clark County, we're north, but the three counties to the south, that is the spine. And so when you think about like truly investing in the heart of the region, that's the heart of the region. And I think it's apparent to people that are doing the recruiting, even if they're across the nation, like, hey, what's happening there in Vancouver? So by anecdote, and I think Jen Baker would be happy to respond to those questions directly, because while I can't cite the numbers, that's one of the questions that's that's asked. And I think we have, we owe it to the region to have an answer. And part of the answer is the proposal in front of us.
Okay, mine's just quick. So it's kind of silly, but I guess I never thought about the actual infrastructure required for bus rapid transit. So thank you for clarifying that. This whole time, I was just like, well, why can't you just, you know, run buses across the bridge? You'd have to have separate designated lanes on both sides and then and then the light rail is just, it's only like one lane, right? Back and forth, they can go both directions?
There would be two, two separate tracks, one going northbound, one for southbound trains. With, if we were just going to run bus rapid transit across the bridge, we would have a designated lane on that bridge for bus rapid transit.
Then you'd have to have special ways for them to get on and off and okay, I just never even thought about that. So thank you for mentioning that. I've been pretty pro BRT, so thanks for specifying.
And and BRT is is a great mode and and C-Trans is doing a tremendous job with the BRT system that they're creating. But as you as you use a freeway to facilitate it, once you get south of our limits, you're back into the same traffic that everybody sits in every day.
First of all, gentlemen, thank you for coming out and taking your time to be here. I appreciate you. First question I have, capacity. With the new proposed bridge, what kind of capacity changes aside from light rail or like or bus rapid transit, whatever? What are we looking at as capacity difference for traffic lanes? Being that, to your point, so many trucks travel that bridge.
So, and I'll I'll start and I'll ask Frank to jump in as well. Currently, the lanes across the bridge range from eleven feet wide to one to ten and a half. And there are no shoulders. You are in that box of the of the truss of the bridge.
I think we all know what you're talking about when you drive.
So that in itself starts when people feel that constraint, it slows people down. So what we are doing is creating a modern facility that will have twelve foot lanes, fourteen foot shoulders. But one of the most important things that we're doing to increase throughput, to make the freeway efficient, is to put in these auxiliary lanes. And these are the lanes that run only between interchanges. Because once again, as you're getting off, you're you're stepping on your brake in a in a through lane, slowing down the traffic behind you. And it may seem like a small thing, but when you're doing that at peak hour, you're starting to cause traffic to queue behind you. So having these auxiliary lanes where people can easily get on and get off the freeway is tremendously important to both the both the safety and the congestion issues that we see. Right now, there are ten and a half hours of congestion on the bridge as it's currently configured. Our studies show that if we do these improvements and we are able to take some of the future load off by having a functioning light rail system, then we're taking that down to between two and a half to three and a half hours a day. We can't solve the congestion problem in the bridge because there are constraints further to the south and to the north that we have, we can't impact with our project. But we can make the traffic flow better in this entire corridor by doing the smart things that we're looking at doing for this program. And I'll turn it to Frank.
Yeah, yeah, I think I think Greg answered it very well. You know, I think the best way to describe it, you know, the auxiliary lane tool that we have here is if you look at I two oh five, you know, Greg mentioned if you're driving across the I five bridge, you kind of feel like you're driving across the two oh five bridge is a much different experience. I two oh five has three through lanes and an auxiliary lane. So if you're getting on at Airport Way or if you're going south and you're getting on at fourteen, you don't have to make that choice immediately. You have really across until you get across the bridge till you either can find a gap and safely get back into traffic or you're going to take the exit. And I think that's one of the, from a capacity standpoint, one of the biggest benefits that we're really able to show is that with that auxiliary lane, northbound today, for example, as you're getting close to the bridge, you have a significant amount of traffic using, you know, Victory or Denver Boulevard to get on, Marine Drive and Hayden Island. And with those three kind of interchanges northbound, it's really constraining I five traffic to maybe a lane and a half. Even though there's three lanes, there's a lot of merging, weaving, people getting over. From a safety perspective, there's high accident locations all within that area. That auxiliary lane allows really the traffic to use auxiliary lane that's coming on for those interchanges. And it lets the freeway, the through lanes of the freeway be the through lanes of the freeway. So it really does from a safety perspective, as well as an efficiency of moving transportation where the freight is, make a significant improvement over what's there today.
If I could just supplement with one other data point. You invited the regional planning director, so I figured I'd throw some data your way. In addition to hours per day, and we all know how inconvenient hours are, like we know, don't go to I five because it's going to be busy all day. Greg pointed out how the business all day is going to be reduced down to a couple hours where now it's maybe the majority of the working hours, you know, eight to five. So that's one major point. But let me give you the northbound example. So this would be driving through the corridor northbound, let's say, starting in North Portland and then driving up into Vancouver. If you don't do anything in the future, the forecast, it would take forty plus or minus minutes to take that trip. Probably takes forty minutes today. When you do the improvement in the future, that cuts down to about twenty five, twenty six, about a forty percent reduction. So how meaningful is that? Well, when you combine the two, so that's during peak hour. Combining the hours of congestion, so it's not going to be congested all day long where it is today, and it will be even more so in the future. And then you actually increase your your travel or reduce your travel time. So you get home quicker, you go to, you know, appointments quicker, whatnot during the PM northbound and reduce that by forty percent. That's a significant capacity improvement. And that doesn't account for, that's driving through the corridor. That doesn't account for what Frank was just trying to describe, which is the movements that just occur, not all the way through, but just from like interchange to interchange or the port trucks getting on and getting off. A lot of port of Vancouver traffic gets on a mill plane, gets off at SR fourteen and goes east. Or maybe comes SR fourteen. That's not accounting for those movements. Those movements will be a lot more efficient. So you're going to have fewer ramps backing up. You're going to have fewer delay that you're having to weave in and weave out because you'll have the ox lanes and they'll be substantially safer. So we hear often in the public, which is, oh, benefit is number of lanes. We need to have fifty eight lanes or we need to have a hundred lanes out there or something like that. That's not necessarily the case. By the design of the lanes and how they're laid out and where they are located in terms of the distances and the ramps, that's where you get the real benefit. And then even driving through the corridors, I mentioned, you know, in the northbound direction, which I want to get home in the evening, you know, you're going to have forty plus or minus percent reduction in the time it takes is the forecast. These are all forecasts. But I have reason to believe that that's probably the case in the future. And the more traffic that can maybe be taken off the quarter is transit as an option, then that just provides one more space for another vehicle perhaps that's more important, or maybe even one fewer vehicle or just better efficiency. And so the whole thing's working together as a system. I think the uniqueness here is it's a bridge across a river and you have one opportunity to build it. And I think if I can impart one message to you, one opportunity to build it. It's a little bit different than the roadways out here. When you do a roadway project, you can, you know, fifty feet today and maybe in ten years, you need fifty five feet and then in ten years, you need sixty feet. You can sort of incrementalize your improvements and the intersection out here is a perfect example. How you did right turn lanes and you're going to do other enhancements. You have one shot to construct this. So the question is, should we construct the most number of pieces, knowing that the pieces is what we're buying, how they're used, how they're purposed, how they're striped? I can't guarantee the future, but once we have the real estate in a bridge, then we can do some things. And even the data as proposed points out some pretty good benefits.
Do you have a quick question?
We got about seven minutes left, so make them quick. I have a couple as well.
Okay, hang on a bit. I was letting everybody else go first. You stole my first one. So so what's the lane width for the two oh five bridge compared?
Those are twelve foot lanes. That is the standard for
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I didn't want to assume. Okay, because you said that you're going to do that on the I five as well and with the fourteen foot shoulders. So and with two and then one auxiliary lane going north and southbound, correct?
So yeah, the one thing I'd make sure you hear about the two oh five bridges is it does not have the fourteen foot shoulders.
Okay, okay.
The shoulders aren't as wide as that, but the lane widths and the auxiliary lane, very similar.
Right, no, I understand that. I was just saying what he said about the I five bridges. Yeah. Second question, so the width is going to, are you going to have the same amount of lanes as two oh five? The three with an auxiliary lane and room for the light rail? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and we will also have room for bike pedestrians crossing the river. And that becomes, folks consider that controversial, but you have to have safe ways for bicyclists and pedestrians to cross that river.
So currently, as they have right now, they do have a spot. How is that going to look different on the new bridge?
So currently, and I've walked across the bridge forty four times now.
It is fun, yeah.
And rode my bike across it only once because I don't want to take my life in my hand. But it's currently, it's a four foot wide path and the railings are low and it discourages people from from walking or biking.
True, you have to share it. Is there one in the middle for bicyclists on the two oh five bridge?
Yes, below the deck level.
Okay, last question. The I two oh five doesn't have light rail, right?
No.
Great, okay.
You gentlemen mentioned that the next funding comes down to a rating. Does that rating include ridership of the mass transit options and ridership numbers therein?
Yes, and I don't know, Scott might be able to better answer this question. He, I know, and has been, has a slide, but that rating, it's broken really into two categories. It's the scope of the program and the funding for the program. And within the scope and the performance piece, ridership is one of the measurables within that, within that kind of performance fifty percent. There's several other topics that are in there as well, but it is definitely part of it.
So let's say, and those right new ridership numbers are being calculated. So let's let's theory craft that maybe those ridership numbers come back differently. Does that, does that also cause you to go back one and a half, two and a half years if the ridership dictates another path? Or are we on this path of light rail or a one and a half to two and a half year delay? Are those our two options essentially? Either we have a delay or we have light rail.
Yeah, so the numbers, as we are looking at the modeling, that's what tells us what ridership will be and we have a model that is verified by RTC and by Metro on the south side. So the feds also have models that they run and that will tell us what the ridership is. Our preliminary cut said ridership looks like thirty thousand rides between light rail and express bus per day out into the future. So those numbers are being looked at and what that also does, it may change the operations and maintenance costs. If those numbers do shrink, that reduces operations and maintenance. But if we do say go away from from light rail because the numbers are are just non-sustainable, that means that we're going to have to go back to the to the table.
Still a delay, okay. And I'm, yeah, not, no.
And one, just last thing to add, if I can, you know, the rating, you know, that's, that's, that is a portion of the rating. And so
Understood.
It's hard to know, you know, what the number would have to get to to really affect the rating significantly because there are other elements that this program performs well in.
Gotcha. Just one real quick question and I see your hand, Trish. And really this gets down to the language that's in front of the CTRAN board, right? So O and M is not going to be discussed till twenty seven, twenty eight. So is what was in your slide, O and M final numbers, right? You have to have a plan in place by then. So the question is really, is anything that was changed or if we change back, is that also caused a delay or where we've been, where has CTRAN been in those discussions? I mean, where are we at in O and M discussions currently? And what are the future plans for those discussions?
Yeah, so I can, I can start and I'll try to be brief. I know we're really short on time, but you mentioned the the language change when back in twenty two, when the LPA was adopted, the modified locally preferred alternative, the CTRAN board did have a condition that had some pretty restrictive language regarding the fact that CTRAN would not be responsible for the light rail operations and maintenance costs. Back in November, the CTRAN board elected to modify that language from being restrictive to more submissive that we may pay for it. And so in that regard, there are some conversations that are happening. The CTRAN staff presented some information to the CTRAN board back in December with more discussion in January. And even a little, a little bit earlier this month, the CTRAN board, as you mentioned in March, will will consider potentially going back to the original restrictive language. And so really, at least the way I would attempt to answer that, Mayor, would be that we would have that same language that had been in place in twenty, since twenty twenty two. CTRAN has participated in many meetings and kind of many discussions about looking for ways to pay for it. However, when we had the restrictive language in place, it was looking for it in a way that wouldn't require CTRAN to help pay for those costs. So I believe at least as a project partner, CTRAN would want to continue in those conversations. But if we do go back to the more restrictive language, that would simply mean that CTRAN wouldn't be considered to be able to help pay for the light rail operations and maintenance. In part because, and we've had these conversations before as well with the CTRAN board, sales, voter approved sales taxes are only go to that's available to us today. And so you know, that has kind of helped, I guess, shape the conversation in terms of where it's at right now. So I hope I at least
I want to get Councilmember Davis to ask a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for coming this evening and giving us more information. I really appreciate it. I watched some presentations from Scott at CTRAN and to me, the elephant in the room kind of is the money and the numbers for ridership. In theory, you know, you said tonight that light rail can move more. But the numbers that I've seen on some of the presentations is not equaling to that statement. I'm concerned that light rail is not going to be as prosperous as you think, whereas we're kind of not looking at the bus rapid transit option. And so I enjoy listening to everything, but I'm still not really convinced on where the the numbers are coming from that would support the cost. And I'm also paying attention to the language of the CTRAN. That's a little concerning to me too. So I just, I want to just put that out there that there's, it's a huge amount of money. It's going to be a huge burden on Clark County taxpayers. And I think the more knowledge and information that you provide is very helpful. So thank you very much.
So we will, we will continue to come back to to meetings like this as numbers get refined and we get a better understanding of of what this looks like. This is one of the things that I tell folks, this is the compromise. If this were purely a Washington or Clark County project, we'd be done. But we have a partner on the south side of the river that views itself slightly different and has different needs than folks on the north side of the river. And I can say that because I've lived in both communities during my five years here. But this is the compromise and I don't know how we stitch back a consensus if we pull too tightly on some of these strings. We're going to try to be most efficient and effective as we can be to move this project forward. We've achieved a level of funding that is unprecedented for this region, bringing this amount of federal dollars back to the states. But we hear the concerns about the efficiency of light rail and the efficiency of our project overall. And so we are every day looking for ways to be more effective and efficient with this project. But we will come back at any time as circumstances change and things differ to to bring you up to speed with anything we're doing.
I know it's a question's a lot of us get up here, so the information is well received. Thank you all for your time. It seems like a simple project between the airport, not being too high, the coast guard making it high enough. You got, you know, a railroad there, you have two downtowns, two heavily populated areas. I'm surprised it's not done already, right? In just, obviously.
Sure, just I want to make sure your question was answered because you asked about the O and M and how it ties to the year and a half delay and the language. I think the the language change doesn't necessarily necessarily put us a year and a half behind. But it does limit the options that the Southwest Washington partners, I think, have as far as trying to find the full funding. Not all of the funding is proposed for CTRAN to pay for O and M. The, even the old language had parts of it that CTRAN would need to fund, like security and maintenance at stations. So I think the the language reverting back might put some limitations on how the partners in Southwest region may find that funding source that we need to lock in by the time we need to for the grant. So it doesn't necessarily like changing light rail at a year and a half. Your question, I didn't know if we answered your question about, does the language do that? I just wanted to make sure.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it. With that, we'll see you guys, I'm sure, in the future. And thank you so much again. We'll close the study session at six fifty five. Thank you. We'll close the study session at six fifty five, thank you. All right, it's February eighteenth, twenty twenty five, seven o'clock. I'm calling this meeting regular meeting in a better on seat of council order. If you're able, please rise for the pledge. Miss Lee Lee role, please.
Mayor McCoy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bowman is absent this evening. Councilmember Kipers.
Here.
Councilmember Ferrer.
Present.
Councilmember DeRozier.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Overholser.
Here.
And the clerk is present, that concludes the roll.
I'd entertain a roll for excusal if the council feels appropriate, feels as appropriate.
Yeah, I move to excuse Deputy Mayor Bowman from the meeting tonight.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is agenda approval, now be the time to remove or amend the agenda if you so desire. If not.
Move to approve the agenda, sorry.
No worries, you're fine. I have a a motion by Councilmember Ferrer.
Second.
And a second and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. And that brings us to summary reports and presentations. These are reported outs from your council members on boards they sit on on behalf of the council. And we'll start it off with Councilmember Davis and the mosquito control district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a really good meeting. We um decided to form a plan and really dive into projects that we think on what level are important. So we're working already on our budget for the next year. It's ever evolving, as we all know. And so therefore, because of all that, we have decided that the board, who usually meets four times a year, we are now going to meet six times a year to make sure that we get everything in our agenda always accomplished. So uh the season is starting to come back in and so we're getting ready to hopefully have another low impact year like we did last year. That's all.
Thank you for that, any questions for Councilmember Davis? All right, brings us Councilmember Ferrer and before I hand it over to you, I just want to say I got a the chair, exiting chair said it was a pleasure to have you on there and you're asking great questions and a great contributor to the committee, so.
I know, I'm gonna miss her, too. That was Sue Marshall, by the way. For those out there, yeah. Okay, for Echo, um there is, and I'm sorry, I should have given this to you to you and the staff to put out to all of us, but we do have time to talk about this and what we want to do, how everybody on the board wants me to go forward. Right at our last meeting, we kind of, the biggest takeaway was that they wrote a letter for their legislative. Yeah, yeah, exactly. And they wanted to write a letter to requesting the support and in addressing the shortfalls due to the document recording fees. And I went over a little bit last last time, you know, I presented on what's going on with Echo. And so they drafted, they want, we can either choose to draft a letter if we want to do that. I kind of meant we had also talked about Jordan maybe putting together one and we just put our name on it. So just wanting to know what the council would, if this is something that they wanted to go after. Uh we don't, we can choose not to do anything. Again, we have a shortfall in our document recording fees, which address a lot of funding. Correct me if I'm wrong with the um a lot of our homeless efforts and um so.
Another letter, are you trying to get more funding? You're trying to make sure it's coming back to us?
Make sure that uh that's with the, so you maybe you have some more to fill in on this, but it, yeah, go for it.
The document recording fees have drastically reduced just because there's no movement in the market of buying and selling homes. So in twenty twenty one, twenty two, there was um far more revenue than they expected. And now, because there's no movement, there's a drastic drop and so they're going to have to really prioritize what they fund for programs.
And so then Echo would like to write a letter asking them not to make those shortfalls in our area with our our homeless efforts. So that's either something that we can do ourselves or I can ask him to put something together and we can take a look at it uh as council and see if it's something we agree on with that statement and or again, do nothing. And I can get that for you by next meeting.
So you have a draft of his proposed letter? That would be helpful.
Okay, okay, I'll have that. So we can put it on, um so you guys can let me know by next meeting. And yes, so.
And if not, bring it up at that time. Uh next report out, Councilmember Overholser and EMS District Two.
Uh yeah, thank you, Mayor. We met Monday, February tenth. It was a very short agenda. Really, the meat of the agenda was uh looking at amending the bylaws to bring a change to the composition of the committee and the board. Currently, again, I think we have spoke about this in the past, but we currently are sitting at three members on the board, which just really limits the ability for communication outside of the meeting because more than one would be a quorum. And so we brought forward that and legal, uh the county legal, Deb looked at it and thought it would be prudent to bring that proposed change to each city and have them give their nod of approval for that because it will affect and have to be modified in the I L A as well as the bylaws. And so uh myself being a representative for the cities will be bringing that forward to uh Ridgefield, Le Center again, it seems like, and Woodland and Chairperson Marshall will bring that to the county council. So while we're all here, uh is there any consensus with? And I know we should probably make it an official thing and put on the business, but are we in favor or are we against? What's the consensus for the ability to modify the EMS to uh I L A to allow for two additional board members to change the composition of the board?
Councilmember, any heartburn on increasing the membership? Nope.
Cool, I will bring that back to the to the EMS district board. Aside from that, we didn't really have any further conversations except for there's an ongoing conversation about what the composition will look like. I think everybody's in favor of adding another representative from a city. The question is whether we can, there's still discussion on whether we could add a chief versus the commissioner from a fire district or do we add a citizen? We were looking at makeups of other districts in the area and in Washington State and they are vastly different. Some have up to twelve members, some have five, seven, but the makeup is is quite different. So we're looking at what that'll look like. Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you for that. Uh brings me to my round of reports. A couple fairly quick ones. The C Tran board did meet. The next meeting is the one that will have the language change vote on it. So uh myself, Councilmember Ferrer, I'm not quite sure if I'm going to make that meeting or not yet. I need to look at my calendar. I was scheduled to be out, but we'll see what I have to do. But at that time, at the next meeting, we need to give direction to our C Tran representative on that language vote. It's a pretty important one, so take in what we heard today. Reach out for more, if you have more questions, I can offer their emails and their contact information. So you're feel free to reach out to them individually or to myself if you want me to help direct your question to who you think could best answer it. So um other than that, there may be another item on the agenda in C Tran in March. And that will be for the board to approve to bring current to Battleground. Current is the micro, I guess you would call it, service. So if the board approves it in March, uh we would then have it potentially rolling out in September. Could be huge for our seniors, for the senior luncheon, uh because it does pick them up at their house and could uh be a more efficient mode of transportation for our seniors. So super happy with C Tran bringing that forward. But please uh get your information ready for that C Tran vote on the language. Uh will be a very important vote next meeting. Additionally, the R T C met, uh mostly went over safety numbers. Uh it was a lot of numbers and I'm, it was a lot of numbers. So if you have an inkling to find out anything about safety statistics in the area, I'm happy to send that presentation along. It was, it's a lot of numbers. Urban County Council Board met as well with presentations. I need to have our ratings in by March third. Uh I will try to see if uh people who are going to be potentially stepping up to take over that board would like to uh sit in on that. So it's a pretty involved process. There's about fifteen projects we have to rate, so it's going to be a pretty long process. But happy to share that and let you in on behind the curtains on how that works. It's pretty important. Those are grants up to four hundred thousand to municipalities, so um it's a pretty big decision. But that's just the rating and then after that, they will rank them, so. Uh and then on to the lighter fare. Went to Roberta Fisher's one hundredth birthday today. And uh it was pretty neat. Alicia set that up, she got her that really cool card and uh now I'm blanking on her favorite flowers. But we also brought her some flowers as well. So what's that? No, it's the ones that kind of look like a face. Yeah, I guess it's always maybe, I don't know. I know that I, obviously, I don't know my flowers well and I'm not going to have a second career as a florist. But it was really cool. Thanks to all of council for signing that card. She was so impressed that everybody from City Council signed that. You can see a little city city seal on it. She spent a lot of her time in Battleground and as a nurse, a lot of people probably were served by uh by her as well. So orchid, thank you, Alicia. All right. And then that's it for all the reports unless there's any other additional council member reports. All right, well, then we'll hand it over to Chief.
So uh one of the really cool parts of the job is to introduce our newest hire and she's not new to policing. This is Shereen Woodard. She comes to us uh from Vancouver Police Department. She spent six years there, uh left as the record supervisor. Prior to that, she spent twenty years as a projectionist and manager for Regal Cascade sixteen. So we're hoping maybe she'll be able to bring some transferable skills there and we watch the first run movies. Shereen's been married to her husband, Mike, for eighteen years. Met here in Battleground, even though they both live in Vancouver. They have three kids that are in attendance, Michael, Luke and Abigail. They're all actively volunteering, working with younger children throughout the year. Shereen's born and raised in Pacific Northwest, started out in Portland, Beaverton. And uh about twenty years ago, she moved to Vancouver. She has tremendous experience with uh customer service internally and externally. She's basically an S M E for Body Cam and its redactions and public records requests. So in her free time, she takes day trips or weekend trips to the beach or where it's warm. She's experiencing mentoring and doing volunteer work with junior high kids and looks forward to get back in that. And I said, what's a fun fact? She says she has one cat named Sammy, a dog named Brody and four parakeets, too many. And even though she thinks her skill of being obsolete, of threading the projector, she said she can still do it in her sleep. So we are very, very, very grateful to have Shereen. Uh as you know, we rolled out the body camera several months ago. She's not, you know, just a one trick pony. She understands that, but certainly all the public records requests that we get. She's used to acting as a supervisor. So what she's been able to bring to us uh in in the uh in our records has just been phenomenal. So we're very grateful, so grateful that our Ops Lieutenant said he was going to bring Rafferty and all of our graveyard officers came as well. So uh Shereen, welcome.
Shereen, if if you'd like, you can step to the podium if you're if you're so desire, I won't make you, it's no worries. If you just want to tell us quick. Okay, all right. I I understand and I think it's great that uh the officers are here to show you support. That obviously shows you've already earned their respect and they're looking forward to to working with you. So that says a lot already, so thank you, gentlemen. Never going to make somebody give a speech if they don't want to. Okay, this brings us to the citizens communication portion of the meeting. We do have a couple of people signed up. We'll open the meeting for citizens communications. You're limited three minutes. This is an opportunity to hear from members of public and limited public forum, not extended dialogue or comments. Please refrain from derogatory remarks, personal attacks, campaign speeches and applause. While the City Council desires to allow public comments, cities business must proceed. Please direct your comments to the mayor. We, the council may not be able to respond to visual comments. We may refer you to a staff member for assistance. We have some business cards of appropriate people available. If you have handouts, please hand them to the city clerk directly to the right of the podium and thank you for your understanding. Uh do we have anybody on Zoom that wants to just to comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
So we'll go with the in person, we have Margaret Tweet signed up. And your time will, and if you would, please, just for the record, state your name.
Margaret Tweet and I'm a Camas resident. I think you've probably heard that Camas adopted a resolution and it was a unanimous vote to oppose light rail in Clark County. And uh so I was here today to talk about that. One of the things, of course, the two billion dollar price tag for the construction is a big concern to residents in the entire county. In addition, I urge you not to approve uh the C Tran desire to spend money on light rail in, out of respect in part to the voters in Battleground. I note that in twenty twelve, there was a C Tran ballot proposition to extend TriMet light rail. there was a C-Trans ballot proposition to extend Tri-Met light rail across the I-5 Bridge. And that was soundly rejected here in Battleground, sixty-five point twenty-nine percent against that ballot measure. And although IBR talks about a poll, an opinion poll that they commissioned, um we don't know much about the poll or how the questions were asked. And I also note that there was a hundred uh one hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty people who participated in that vote here in Clark County. So I think that is probably a bigger sample than IBR obtained. And those were not selected for any other reason except that they wanted to participate here in Clark County as voters. So I'd urge you to to really consider that when you're looking at um at changing and allowing our our C-Trans funds to fund light rail, something we have voted against. And then in twenty twelve, there was a countywide vote. And by an even bigger margin, sixty-eight percent countywide rejected light rail. And they asked that if light rail be brought in, it would be subject to a public vote, which it never has. Never has it passed in Clark County. Now, on the ridership, three thousand three hundred weekday uh passenger trips across the river, that's from year two thousand six. I hear I sent you a graph and it shows that three thousand two hundred is the number of crossings today. Or we actually don't know the year, but that IBR has presented. So that's a very similar figure. There is not a big growth. In fact, there was a large decline in ridership over the I-5 Bridge, which suggests that light rail is not needed. The buses are working great. They handle the demand. And it looks like they'll be able to handle it well into the future with changes like working from home, working remotely. The emphasis that they have placed on bicycles and transit, over forty-five percent of the bridge, over fifty-five percent of the bridge is dedicated to transit pedestrians and bicycles. So I hope you'll take a look at this information that I sent you. You know, that space is valuable space. Hate to see it taken up in light rail uh that citizens have repeatedly rejected. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Margaret. Uh next up, Jessica Cole.
Hello, City Council. I'm Jessica Cole. I just want to say welcome to um the new councillor uh Kipers. And I think I thank her for um applying and for um being willing to serve. I'm here to uh mention some concerns about the fit of the proposed Fifth Street extension. I recently contacted most of you and the city manager provided some answers to my questions, letting me know there was a presentation to the school board last week. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend or watch the recording yet, but I plan to do so soon. And after reviewing it, I may have additional or updated feedback. But when I reviewed the proposed road plans um on the city's website a few months ago during the public input period, I was surprised to see that the extension includes connections to the side streets north of Fifth Street. These neighborhoods are not suited to handle increased traffic. They lack sidewalks, meaning pedestrians, many of them children, must walk directly in the streets. Additionally, this area is surrounded by five schools, Captain Strong Elementary, Chief Untouched Middle School, Ham Academy, Battleground High School, and Cornerstone Christian Academy. Children frequently walk and ride bikes through these neighborhoods and introducing more traffic would pose a major safety risk. If the Fifth Street extension moves forward, I strongly urge the city to limit it to connecting only from five oh three to Parkway without extending it into the northern side streets. Extending it further would not only increase cost funding that may not be available, um but also creates additional is issues such as making some side streets too narrow for safe for safe passage. Furthermore, if the extension proceeds, it is crucial to include a properly designed intersection at five oh three, either traffic lights or roundabout. A simple right in and right out configuration would not effectively address traffic concerns and would be a missed opportunity to improve both walkability and overall traffic flow. Lastly, after driving through these neighborhoods, I noticed that the roads already have significant cracks and wear, making them ill-suited for increased vehicle traffic. Combined with the lack of sidewalks for pedestrians, particularly children, this raises additional safety concerns. To clarify, the sidewalks don't start in the neighborhood until Ninth Street. Also, one of the current side streets is mostly a narrow passage to a home's driveway. Thank you for your time and consideration. I appreciate your attention to how these safety concerns will be addressed. I'm also looking forward to hearing about C-Trans and the current in the future. And I totally support the name change of the community center to the Battleground Event Center. So thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. You got a lot in there. Yeah, and with time to spare. So you and the yeah. Uh huh. That ends uh this portion of the citizens communications for this meeting. So that brings us consent agenda. Uh now would be the time if anybody on council wishes to remove something from the consent agenda for further discussion. Otherwise, an entertaining motion for uh approval as presented.
Motion to approve as presented.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ferrer in a second to approve count consent agenda. Any further discussion?
Uh I'll say one thing. Can I say something real fast? Uh I would like to say just underneath the HVAC replacement project, so thankful that came under budget. Um so thank you to our staff and also for um answering all my multiple questions.
Perfect, a perfect time to do that. Thank you. Uh uh any other further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry six zero. Uh that brings us to the business portion of the meeting. And it looks like we have our deputy city manager starting us off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The community center has been known by its current name as the Battleground Community Center since two thousand eight. Um although the the community center is in high demand, it often hosting multiple events on a daily basis, it is something of a misrepresentation to call it a community center. For example, it is not open to the public at all times of the day. And in fact, there are many instances when all or a portion of the facility is booked for a private event or events. For this reason, staff believes it more appropriate to rename the facility as the Battleground Event Center, which is a name consistent with its operation. The process to name or rename a park or a facility eh within the jurisdiction of the city is described in the municipal code, chapter eight, eighteen, one hundred. That process is predicated upon uh initial review and recommendation by the PACE board. And once PACE has made a recommendation, the city council has the authority to either approve or not, as the case may be. PACE recommended the name um considered and recommended the name change during its meeting last week on February twelfth. As stuff as such, staff recommends that the city council consider and adopt resolution number twenty-five dash zero one and change the facility's name to the Battleground Event Center. That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Uh not seeing any questions. All um I will just say that a lot of this genesis is because of the work of getting the senior center, uh allowing our seniors free use of that. And having that maybe more appropriately named now. And so I think this is a great uh the next iteration along that line. Uh with the senior center remodel and opening that up to seniors, uh I believe uh this all makes sense. So um I am in support of this resolution and would entertain a motion if there's no discussion.
Um I move to adopt resolution twenty-five zero one, renaming the Battleground Community Center as the Battleground Event Center.
Who is that? Who is the second? Okay, okay, Councilmember Ferrer is uh first. Councilmember Derosers is the second, sorry. Um any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Doesn't he normally have to read? No.
Oh, and it's just a resolution. It's not a
No, it's a resolution.
So passes six to zero, but you did make me think about it. Uh brings us to our next business item and uh Public Works Director Mark Hersick.
Good evening, council. Give me a minute. I'll get my presentation up. Make sure I do the right one. Been a box block my thing. So give me a second. Should be pulling down here. There we go. Um so tonight I'm gonna talk about the street preservation program for twenty twenty-five. The first part of the presentation, since we have a new council member, I'll talk a little bit about um our street ratings and what they mean um and how projects are selected. Then I'll go into the typical work we did last year. Um work that when proposing for twenty twenty-five, talk about procurement and then talk, answer any questions you may have. And feel free to interrupt me at any time. Um happy to answer questions. So um every three years, we have our roads rerated. Um it's a score of zero to a hundred with hundred being a perfect brand new road. And zero essentially being a road that's turned to gravel. We lasted this rating in twenty twenty-three and we'll do it again in twenty twenty-six. Uh as of twenty twenty-two, the city had about eighty-seven and a half centerline miles of road. Um we're well over ninety at this point, based on the years since that's been include seven miles of arterials, about seventeen miles of collectors, and then overwhelming majority, um sixty-three miles as local streets. Um the city's overall rating is seventy-two, which is a good. Um you can see the scale there. So we're on the the low end of good. Um as part of that rating, we look at different scenarios for funding. Uh the first is unconstrained needs. That essentially gets the roads to a really high value. It assumes you have all the money in the world and and budget sort of thing. Um for us, that would mean four and a half million per year over a five-year period. That would get our roads to eighty-three after that five years and we'd have zero dollars in deferred maintenance. Our current funding, which has been bouncing around, but estimated at one point two million a year. Um after the five years, we'd go up a point. Um at the end of that time, we'd have almost sixteen million in deferred maintenance. To increase that score by five points, which would get us to a seventy-seven, it's about two dol- two million dollars a year. Um and at the end of that, you'd have twelve and a half million in deferred maintenance. And then assuming we spend nothing, um after five years, you would lose eight points and you'd have twenty million in deferred maintenance. Our current deferred maintenance right now is about eight point eight million. Uh twenty twenty-five budget's about one point three million. And one thing I want to note that's important is these budgets above don't take into account ADA ramps. Um I've mentioned before that almost every treatment we do requires the ADA ramps to be brought up to standard. Um slurry seal is essentially the only one you can do without having to do that. So um when you see these numbers, they they don't include that number. So something to be aware of. How are projects selected? Um so you can see here the different treatment options. They range from uh doing a crack seal, which is purely sealing the cracks. Um slurry seal and microsurfing are very similar. Um microsurfing has a little bit different materials in it. Um we typically use those on the heavier traffic streets. Uh your chip seal is a you lay down oil and cover with rock. Um your cape seal is essentially doing a chip seal and then a slurry seal over the top of it. Uh mill and fill is where you remove a couple inches of the material and then put new asphalt down. And then you have full-on reconstruction, whereas you go down, take the asphalt and the rock out and replace everything. Um so when we're selecting project, the model that we put everything into spits out recommended treatments uh based on budget and condition to maximize PCI. Um and this is something always people find interesting, but the strategy is to maintain the good roads first and then take care of your bad roads. Think you would assume that you would want to take care of the bad roads first. However, as you saw, they're the most expensive. So um maintaining your roads to make sure they don't turn into the bad road is more cost effective. Um staff uses that model as a base and then fine tunes to maximize budget. Um and we also field truth the model just to make sure everything matches up with what's being said. Uh so for our twenty twenty-four work, um kind of in area one, we had a couple bigger roads that we were doing microsurfing on. Those did not get done, so they'll be done this year. Uh and then we had a chip seal it over on Commerce. It did get completed, but um there's definitely some repairs that are needed out there. Um and then there were a few ADA ramps associated and those got completed. Area two, north side of town, um the slurry seal did not get done, so that will have to be completed. Um the cape seal, um the chip part of it got placed, but again, that's having issues. So they'll have to repair that and then put the uh slurry down. And then the ADA ramps in that area were completed. Area three is kind of over by Twentieth and Main. Um it's the area where we had a traffic calming project a few years before. Um the mill and fill on Eighteenth got completed by Taco Bell. Uh the microsurfing, which will be on Fifteenth, is still remaining. And the similar to the other area, the cape seal, the chip got done but needs repair and the slurry has to go on top. Uh ADA ramps got completed. Uh area number four over by Rasmussen Parkway uh did not get done, so that will have to be completed this year. And then area five, the mill and fill on Eaton, uh that was partially funded by TIB. That was completed, as were the ADA ramps. So for twenty twenty-five, um we're focusing on the southwest uh neighborhood off of Twentieth, south of Main Street. Um several subdivisions there. Um so for Horse Thief Canyon, which is the most southern of those subdivisions, uh most of that will handle a slurry seal. Um so we're proposing that. Uh cape seal again, which is the chip seal covered by a slurry seal, uh will cover most of the rest of the area. So that's Winchester Ranch, both phases of that, and then Robinwood. Um you can see the circles there. That's every intersection where all the ADA ramps will have to be done, uh which I counted at about fifty. Um so the total cost for that area is about a million dollars. So that essentially takes most of the budget for this year. Um so estimated for twenty twenty-five, we've got the budget for the remainder twenty twenty-four work. We've got the southwest area, which I just showed. Uh and then there's separate contracts for crack sealing um markings and the long line striping, which the county does. All in total, that will equal about two point one, two point two million dollars for this year. Uh in terms of procurement, uh there doesn't appear to be any shared contracts this year. Um I think there was a little bit of fallout from how the project went this year. So everyone appears to be doing an independent contract this year. Um so for us, that means we'll bid out the ceiling ramps and markings project. Uh we are allowed to piggyback on Vancouver's crack seal um project. Um we've had a really good contractor over the last couple of years. I've gotten stuff done really efficiently. So that's worked out really well. And then Clark County staff will do the striping. They own their own equipment. Um they've striped our streets every year for as long as I've been here. So I will continue forward with that. Happy to answer any questions. One thing, sorry, I wanted to add. Um I had been planning out, looking at some of the uh reconstruction that we need to look at that could be coming up. Um I feel like it's probably more appropriate for the uh retreat um because there's several kind of competing needs that you'll see through that. So um at that, I plan on talking about several of the streets you hear about, like South Twentieth, uh North Twentieth, Grace, uh Scott and those sorts of streets. So I'll have a bunch of that information to you. But again, feel like you need to see it compared to all the other needs in the city to have it fully make sense. So I just wanted to add that in.
You must have saw me jumping for the mic because that was gonna be the question. Where, when is Twentieth gonna be done? So thank you for, you know, bringing that forward. Um two questions. How long do ADA ramps usually last?
Um they're concrete, so if done correctly, seventy-five to a hundred years. Um the issue that usually happens is the ADA standards change. So um all of these places have some sort of ramp. They just don't meet the current standard. Um there's typically a bit of a grandfathering, but it only covers and lasts so long. So um it's really not the concrete as much as it is just the the standard that's required.
Yeah, because I was gonna say um going south on Twentieth and that whole, all those little neighborhoods, I don't think there were seventy-five to a hundred year old neighborhoods. So
No.
But
No, and again, the the concrete's, again, if it's poured correctly, correct weather, that sort of thing can last a long, long time. But it's it's the standard of the ADA.
Okay. And just uh for those listening in, can we uh would you be willing to just give a little bit of a an answer as to why the twenty twenty-four projects weren't completed? I know that's all over the place. Like, why isn't this done? Why isn't this done? So.
I can't answer specifically what happened with the contractor, but um we had a end date of, I believe, the end of September to finish our projects. Um they didn't even start They didn't even start till October. So they were already, without having done a single bit of project behind. You know, I can surmise that they may have just taken on too much, you know, compared to staff availability, but that would just be, be me assuming. With all of that said, we are working through the contract with them. We've, as I've said on other projects, there's protections that we have in the contract. So we're working with legal and the contractor to get that situated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate you. So great presentation, great numbers. I, I hope whoever's listening online, because there's not a lot of people sitting in these chairs, for the people at home and the people on social media, know we don't ignore our roads. The priority of maintaining the best roads to keep them on a high level to good and good quality, I think is the the thing that hits home to me is like keeping what's good, good. And because we do have to expense a lot of money to rebuild the ones that have gone bad. And I think that's an important point to make. Thank you for making that. And to my folks back in Robinwood. We're getting our, we're getting our roads redone this year. So that's pretty exciting. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the best analogy I can come up with is like you don't repaint a pinto. You just wait till she breaks down and you just go out and you buy a new one. So at some point, you know, you don't get new rims and you know, well, actually some kids might nowadays. I shouldn't say that. So I wouldn't anyway. But I am, that was going to be my question for the retreat. I would be very curious for council's benefit that hasn't been here. Two years ago, we put an extra couple of million towards roads. So I would be interested in looking at the three worst roads potentially and what, what that dollar figure is and what budgetarily that means. And where do we spread that over? What does that look long-term? Does that mean TBD? So obviously the retreat's going to be action packed. So I'm glad to hear that's coming because that's what I wanted to hear tonight. So any other questions for Mark? I can't see Tricia's picture anymore. So I'm sorry, council member Davis.
No questions. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
All right. I think the next one's yours as well.
All right. Let's see if I can do this a little smoother this time. All right. Good evening again. This is presentation number two on city speed limits. I'll again provide kind of a quick summary of our first meeting last month. I'll talk about existing speed limits. Talk about the couple of options that we discussed. Show what major streets would be, and those would be related to options two A and two B. I'll talk a little bit about Bellevue and something recently they've done. Next steps and then questions. So kind of a summary of our first meeting, you know, state law essentially allows speed limits from twenty miles per hour to sixty miles per hour in the city. At twenty and twenty-five, those are statutory, which essentially means council can decide to do it without having a speed study. All other speed limits require the speed study to justify. We have a new MUTCD. And again, for our new council member, what that is, is I call it the sign Bible. So it's the manual on uniform traffic control devices. And it's the reason when you go to Arkansas, that a stop sign is red with eight sides. It makes sure that throughout the country, all signs are the same. Things are treated similarly. So you, as a driver, have the expectation, you know, the same throughout the country. That's why that document exists. I showed an example, speed study of one of the areas. And kind of the outcome from that meeting was we had the staff recommendation, which I came in with. And then there was some discussion about the statutory, making major streets and minor streets and having set speed limits for those. So just as a reminder, our current speeds in the north side of town, we got several thirty-fives. And then there's a few forties and fifties kind of on the outskirts of those. On the south side, forty is probably the predominant. You have a few thirty-fives going north and south. And then again, on the edges, you have a couple of fifties. So option one was the one I presented. It was essentially based on speed studies. With that one, most streets would be thirty-five miles per hour. There was a few outliers that didn't quite have the development yet that to me justified the lower speed. And those would be forty and then local, local street speed wouldn't change. The cost and quantities, I estimated about twenty-three signs, which is about thirty-five to forty-five hundred dollars. And again, on this estimate, sort of took the worst case where had to buy a brand new sign, a brand new post. Concrete for everything, hit a rock while we were digging a hole. So it's sort of a worst case cost estimate. So option two A, essentially two A and two B are the same thing. It just changes how you sign it. So in the scenario, major streets would go down to twenty-five miles per hour, minor streets would be twenty. In this particular two A option, you'd have a citywide speed limit of twenty miles per hour. That essentially would get set at all the entrances to the city. And then where you had major streets, they would be signed at twenty-five. I estimated about eighty-three signs, which is about twelve thousand five hundred to sixteen five, give or take on that scenario. Option two B, like I said, it's essentially the same scenario, but in this case, you set the citywide at twenty-five. And then you place the twenty mile per hour signs throughout kind of the subdivisions. This led to actually a lot more signage, estimated a hundred eighty-six signs. And that price is about twenty-eight thousand to thirty-seven thousand. So looking at major streets, this is kind of what I propose for the north area. You know, it's typically your arterials and collectors. And then on the south side, same thing, streets that we'd have. I do want to point out Bellevue, I attached an article or actually two articles from MRSC. They recently have made all their minor streets twenty miles per hour. They did it a little bit piecemeal, so they didn't rip the Band-Aid off, but they started slowly. So they started with actually some pilot projects, did a lot of public outreach related to those. And essentially after doing the pilot projects, they had a lot of data that essentially justified that lower speed limit. So they were able to use that to, because you're going to get a lot of questions regardless of what you do. You know, there's always, speed limits are important to people, both high, low, you know. So they essentially did this to be able to have good answers when people called about that. So I just throw that out there as maybe a good hybrid option. If you want to do two A or two B, it might make sense to start slowly. Do some, you know, spots that you check that out, see if it's really gaining the benefit that you want and then take it farther. So next steps, I'm kind of looking for a path forward, or if you have more info that you need, I'm happy to do this again. Depending on the decision that's made, we have speed limits on both a resolution and an ordinance in our code. So we may have to do one or both, depending on what happens. Assuming everything works out, I would bring that to council for approval in March and then we would install the new signs. So from there, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, council? Jump in.
Thank you, Mark. All that good information and also for providing some extra clarification for me. One of the questions I had was specific to, no, I've lost my train of thought. What was my question? Oh, I know. I'm sorry. If we, if we pull the Band-Aid off and we just did it across, what kind of an impact, I guess this is more for the chief, what kind of an impact do you see in being able to support that? You know, obviously that can be a big change immediately. And there's going to be people, no matter how much we communicate, who aren't going to be aware. What does that mean from a traffic control perspective?
I think you already hit it on the head is you're always going to have some that doesn't matter how much education we do. We're going to have some that are going to be defiant. It'll be, you know, just like any, when we've rolled out new parking, we typically go through warning periods before we go to, you know, more ticketed enforcement. I wish I could give you a more definitive answer. I just think it really truly depends on what the public sentiment is.
I guess my question is more around, do, do you see an impact more on your staff? And how you're allocating their time or how that, their availability, you know, what's the impact to your staff? I guess is where I'm coming from.
I think it would have a sharp increase. Right now, traffic safety is probably our biggest priority that we continue to push. So this would just exasperate it more towards that. We try to prioritize the complaints that come in. We use some technology to try to focus where we're going to spend our efforts. So this would just make it a little bit more cumbersome. But as I had said last time, we truly just enforce what is set in front of us and prioritize it from there.
Something for you. So it will make it more cumbersome, but the, the ultimate outcome would be better for your objective, right? You want people to be safer on the roads. And so ultimately it would be less work with for you. In the long run, if people change their behavior in driving, the streets are safer, there's less crashes.
I'm not, I'm not sure that I have data to support that. I leave all that up to the, the traffic engineers of what they believe that the best speed limits are for the, that goes beyond my expertise.
But ideally.
Certainly, lower speeds typically mean less severe accidents. But we also have to look at how much can you funnel through one area? And you know, travel times, trying to get people to abide by that and not be frustrated. This is absolutely hand in glove that we do with, with traffic engineering. We, we look to them, they do the, the analysis and set the, the data up for us. And ultimately they come up and say, hey, this is what we want. And then we'll go out and enforce it. Sure, lower speeds, we've seen some horrific accidents. But I'm not certain, again, because it goes beyond my expertise of how it would impact traffic accidents and traffic safety by lowering that through the city. And I think that's just better proposed remark.
Council member Davis, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mark, again for this. Driving around town and checking out the speed has been kind of interesting. I do have a question on option one. Can you get that slide back up there by any chance?
Do you want to see the map or the, just the option one slide?
So so most streets would be thirty-five with a few sections of forty. Okay. Now, could you go to what that map would look like for those streets that would be forty?
So on north side, you would, kind of the bubbled areas would change to thirty-five. And then on that east side there at the bottom of the map, that would change to forty. And then on the south side of the city, those forties and the fifty on Grace would go to thirty-five. And then on Eaton, that fifty, that's kind of on the edge would match the current forty there. So that, yeah, that covers it.
Thank you. I'm, I'm more in favor for this. I'm not a rip the Band-Aid off and do something drastic. I think different areas of town deserve different speed limits. As drivers, I do think we have a responsibility to watch what our speed limits are. I agree there are definitely areas that are too high. But when you look at Eaton, one ninety-ninth, twenty-five is just, it's not built up. It's still industrial on the east side. I like, I like the thirty-five. And then the lower ones in town. So I, if I was, I like the pricing too with the, the signs. Safety, obviously we're seeing issues. So I'm glad that we are addressing it. But right now I like option one. So thank you.
Council member Davis, council member Ferrer.
Thank you, mayor. I would agree with council member Davis. I, I like option one. You've got the, the speed studies that you guys are using as you're presenting to us. It makes sense to use those studies. I definitely like the lower, the lower tag for the pricing. My other reason for this is if we lower it at too low, then are we going to be making speeders out of citizens who normally wouldn't be speeding? And we already, like Chief said, exasperated, you know, our, our police presence out there is, is limited as it is. Or, yeah. And so doing this, I think would create more of a burden. I'm definitely, my biggest concerns are definitely five oh two and Main Street. And I know we have to wait on that one. That one, I would love to get that one rushed on as soon as possible because the incidences are, it feels like every week out there. And with some of the tragic, you know, situations we've had out there, our outcomes definitely need to get that one addressed. So I'm all in favor for reducing that speed down to Main Street. Yeah, I think thirty-five, I, I agree with council member Davis, twenty-five. I'm going to be honest with you for transparency. I do not want to go twenty-five miles per hour throughout, you know, the major roads that just, I don't feel like it needs it. There are definitely, you know, the neighborhoods. But there's things that we can do to slow down those people as well. Yeah. So I'm, I'm in favor for option one. Thank you.
Good feedback. Honesty is always the best one. Council member Overholzer here next. Yeah. She's gone once.
Mark, just for clarification with the new expansion of the west side of Eaton. What, do you know like what the recommended speed limit would be with what we've proposed for construction on that?
The cross section is very similar to east of five oh three. The one difference is, is the bike lanes will be separated from the roadway. So you'll have your three lanes, then your planter strip, and then the bike and sidewalk will be together. Otherwise the widths are the same, you know, everything else matches. So the proposed thirty-five, you know, I proposed doing everything thirty-five there. So I think that would be, you know, once it gets built, the speed limit could stay the same. Thank you.
Yeah. So I'm going to kind of repeat maybe a little bit what the council member Ferrer said. I have some concerns about lowering the speed limit too much. And learning what I've learned from traffic control, you're creating an expectation that's not going to meet reality. What's going to be the result of that is we're going to get more complaints because people just simply aren't going to drive slower just because it's supposed to slower. So that's one of my concerns. My second concern, again, council member Ferrer brought up, Main Street. I'd like to wait and see what WASDOT comes back at. I believe that the number that they give us, I want to make sure that it makes sense holistically within your plan. So for me personally, I love the work. I love the thought put into it. I think this is a great presentation. It gives us all we need to make a decision. I thank you for that. But for me right now, I just want to wait until WASDOT comes back with a decision. With that, did you have, council member Kuyper?
Thank you. I was just curious, just from my own understanding. The budget, since this kind of came up after we're already into a 2025 budget, is this, what does this budget impact? No matter what, what funds does this come out of? No matter what option we went with.
It would come out as streets and I always budget for miscellaneous items that come up throughout the year. So, you know, on the larger end, we might have that discussion. The, the low end, it's covered in budget.
So I, you know, personally, I'm for a change that kind of gets some a little more consistency if nothing else. Because you come into a city, you don't, you think that the city limit is what the city limit is, but it's different in different areas. So whatever that lands at, I don't have a lot of heartburn on what the number is as much as having some consistency. And the other piece of that was before we would make a change, I would really like to have some more solid data that we can use for communication purposes, because otherwise we're just hitting the public with this change and nothing that says this is really why we're doing this. Thank you.
So council, in order to give Director Hersick some direction, I'm looking for some option numbers that I've had two council members give their option numbers that they're. I have two council members give their option numbers that they're in favor of, and so I think at this point it might behoove us to help narrow it down if we can either eliminate one or you can throw your support behind one, so please speak up. And just, just speak up.
I do like your idea, Mayor, of waiting to, for us to see what Wasdott comes back with. I think that comes to what you were saying as well, so we can kind of have some kind of uniformity throughout our city. Because I would agree, I've been caught speeding once on I-5 a long time ago. Because I was new to the area and there's a change from seventy to sixty. I was very truthful, you know, well, I was new. And so I didn't know where that, that line was and, and the police officer was very respectful. She was thankful how honest I said how fast I was going. She's like, wow, you're reading on it. But, but my point is, yeah, it's, it was very confusing as somebody who's coming into this, you know, to this area and just having that, that uniformity, I'm, I'm a pro of that and then waiting.
I'm in favor of option A. I think we need to definitely have some immediacy made to some of those areas where there is residential neighborhoods at fifty miles an hour. I also agree with any major changes to the artillery or the artery main, five oh-two, five oh-three, anything like that until we get some state feedback from Wasdott, but I'm in favor of option A for right now.
Two A, correct? Councilmember Droscher?
Yes, I have a question. So when you did the study, you literally did every roadway, correct? Okay, so these are, I guess people were actually going thirty-five on Twentieth?
Correct, if not higher.
Well, only in the industrial or commercial area.
No, it's right before Main Street, driving crazy.
I know, it's because of Albertson's and all that. And then it goes up to thirty, is it thirty or thirty-five now?
It's thirty-five, so right in the downtown or the Main Street corridor, it's twenty-five on both sides. But once you get out of there, it's thirty-five on both sides.
So, okay, so we, we have a couple of people are interested in option one and one and two A, so we've, actually we've not helped you at all.
Well, for clarification, Eric, I thought you meant option one.
Sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so I think I hear option one with the delay until Wasdott, is kind of what I'm hearing.
Yeah, and if we can communicate, I mean, they've been great, I don't know. You have a great relationship with them, I trust your judgment.
I talk to them daily.
Better you than me. Not because I don't like them, but because it's frustrating what they have to, the hoops they have to go through as well. So, yeah, I mean, I think the timing of that's really important.
There's also some logic to it, so I mentioned the ordinance. Our ordinance actually has the state highway speed limits in it, so if it's going to change, we should just update everything at once, so there's, there's more logic to just waiting. And quite honestly, I don't think it's going to be that long for them anyway, so.
I think this at the end of March.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And I can get behind number one after hearing all the inputs, so thank you.
Awesome. Thank you guys, everybody, for, clear direction is an important part of this process, so appreciate that. I think that ends our business portion of the meeting, brings us to administrative reports.
Just a quick note to follow up on EMS two, I'm a part of the work group with County Counselor Sue Marshall, otherwise it would be a public meeting. But a work group has been formed to try to figure out what we're going to do for ambulance transportation. We sent an RFP for a consultant to study different mechanisms, whether we're issuing an RFP for ambulance service or, you know, EMS levy, those type of things. The responses came back, they are much higher on cost than we had anticipated, so the proposals have been rejected. But apparently there is momentum, momentum, I should say, to now work collaboratively again with the city of Vancouver. And I'm trying to meet up with the city manager of Vancouver this week. And I know there's been some of the electeds that are meeting on this as well. In case you, so for some background, we piggybacked off one of their, the cities were a part of the ambulance contract that expired at the end of last year, it was a ten-year contract. Vancouver wanted to go their own way. And with that was a pretty hefty readiness fee. So for EMS two, it was stated that we would have to pay about a five-hundred-thousand-dollar readiness fee. But in discussions with AMR, there is the distinct possibility to share ambulance resources with the city of Vancouver. If they agree, and that would minimize, or ideally eliminate the readiness fee, so. Stay tuned, I might have more information at the next meeting. And then on a really quick last note, as you know, we launched a community survey, which we're hoping to have some really good data by the time we have our council retreat on March twenty-one. Sent out about three thousand of those surveys and to be statistical, we need to have at least four hundred responses. We launched that three weeks ago and as of today, we learned we have three hundred responses, so they're coming in faster than I thought they would, so that's really exciting. We'll have more of that data to share with you at the retreat. That's, that's the end of my report, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, that brings us to council communications. Anybody have anything to report out? Couple things, if not. Based on previous council direction, I did reach out to some legislative representatives about our position on a couple bills, specifically the railroad reimbursement and that we would like a, potentially a carve-out to not include Clark. Oh, okay, just a second, a carve-out for the railroad portion of it, as well as reaching out for the legislative bill that's pending on the zero-point-five parking places and our opposition to that. And I see Councilmember Davis has her hand raised, so I'll hand it over to her.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if this is the, the place, but I think I need to ask about council feel on, are we interested at all in a resolution against light rail? Being, and the reason why I ask, if we wait until the next meeting and we want to do a resolution, that's, we're pushing up against the March eleventh meeting for C-Trans. Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask if we could do kind of a feel, if we want to even start this process and have it perhaps ready to discuss and or sign at our next meeting.
Yeah, no, that's a perfect place to bring it up. I will say, I personally see them as two different issues, the vote for the C-Trans language and any resolution. Because of resolution, you don't get a resolution to direct your C-Trans member how to vote, so. I, they are connected, however, I would see them, I would see them as separate issues. So is there support on this council to look at a resolution? I'm guessing you're talking similar to the Camas one where they
Correct. They oppose it.
Oppose light rail in any form on the bridge. Is there, council? Speaking here.
So we talked about before how you were talking with C-Trans about if Vancouver wants it, they can pay for it. And I'm fine with that, I just don't think that we should be paying for it.
Okay.
Which rises, then I question that if we allow Vancouver to do it, how do they, it still would be at a cost to our citizens and our taxpayers or?
Would have to be different than.
I mean, you can't, you can't say, oh, it's yours, so you have to pay.
Well, I think the reasoning would be you don't bring it out of the current sales tax revenue that C-Trans gets out of their point seven.
Which is sales tax, right? It takes out the sales tax.
Correct. I think that would be the distinction, that's the distinction I was trying to make, that's what you're talking about.
That needs to be separate.
So there's potential other funding mechanisms, I don't, I'm not an expert in the field, that would be a great question to have C-Trans back in front of us for.
And I do apologize to everybody on the panel, I haven't had a chance to read the Camas resolution. But I know that us here on Battle, most of us, I was watching the meeting from a distance and I did see, it seemed like there was, and, well, you're new, so I'll let you weigh on it. It was unanimous, it seemed like the majority of us were fine with the, the rapid bus transit. But, well, sorry, Councilmember Davis wasn't, but everybody else, I think, was okay with it. And, but everybody, it seemed like some kind of conformity that we were all are in an agreement that we were not in favor of the light rail. And so if that's what the resolution is about, I think taking that with you when you go to vote would probably be so kind of a support for you.
I mean, you wouldn't take it with you, but, I mean, it, it does codify your position, but I, I think what Councilmember Davis is, is asking is, is there support to do a resolution like Camus did, which is against light rail in any form on the bridge? And so far, I've heard not on, you know, I've not heard yet from council where we sit on that, so go ahead.
Let me ask this question. We've already put out the stance that we do not in any way, shape or form want to pay for light rail as battleground. Is there any difference between that and the resolution as far as it stands? A resolution is a piece of paper saying we don't want to pay for light rail, we don't want light rail on the bridge. Our stance is we don't want to pay for light rail or our citizens to pay for light rail. Does that have any real standing in, in the decision-making when it comes to the RTC or?
No, a resolution just codifies your opinion, I mean, your opinion, it, it's, obviously, you're just going to get maybe more press and, and it may get reported on more. It could be, it bring more attention to the issue, but if that's, if that's the intent, then, then, you know, then a resolution would be appropriate. But as far as the vote at C-Trans, it's not going to change whether there's a resolution or not. It's, it's essentially that, I think Councilmember Davis had her hand raised, so. I don't want to take, yeah, she needs to lead this conversation, so I don't want to put words in her mouth.
So I can talk?
Sorry, yeah.
Okay, well, I guess my question to you is, I understand resolution is paper and, and that such thing, but I go back to, we did it for Larch Mountain when they wanted to close the corrections and we wanted to state something. And we knew then that a resolution meant the same thing as it is now. I think it's important when our voters in the past have voted no, that we do have a strong stance on something that affects our city highly. So I, I understand that it might not be a be-all, end-all, but I, I think it's important notice how strongly we feel about it.
And I think a resolution does that, so I, I would agree, I would agree with that point. The question is, council want to do that?
And so I would be in favor of it because I think it does, like you said, shed light on it. They'll, whoever's bringing up the, the light rail is saying that, you know, a lot of residents are supportive of it. But you also have a lot of residents who are against it. And I think when they discuss this, they see the cities within Clark County standing up with resolutions and saying, hey, are we, we're not in favor of this.
So my opinion may have changed, I don't know, with the whole structure of the bridge, it doesn't make sense. Is what I thought before with the BRT, it is, I don't know. So I, I don't have an opinion either way at this time, so I don't want to say I'm for or against something except for that I don't want us to have to pay for it. So that's all I'm able to say right now.
Yeah, I would agree with that, I'd have the same opinion. I, I don't have enough information to say if I'm for or against the light rail itself. I see advantages, disadvantages both ways. But I also don't see that the citizens can, can bear the cost of back in battleground.
All right. I, I think Councilmember Davis, if I'm not seeing a, a majority of support for it, I think at this point maybe you could bring forward some language. I'm welcome, I'm happy to put it on the agenda, if you have some language. My ask on that is, my concern of this whole process, sitting on the boards I sit on, is I do not want to kill this bridge. I do not want to be the town of twenty thousand that provides a veto on a six-billion-dollar project that impacts the economics of this region for multitudes of decades to come. So my only ask on that resolution is it just doesn't, it, it goes to Councilmember Derocher's, Derocher's point that we just don't pay for it. I, I would not be in support of a resolution that just says, similar to Camas's, because just of what we heard today and probably killing the bridge, maybe delaying, at the very least delaying it. So that's where I'm at on it. If you still want to bring forward and put it on the agenda, you know, send me an email, we'll put it on the agenda with, with language. Happy to do that, that's always a council member's prerogative or pejorative.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, that, it's eight thirteen, this meeting's adjourned, thank you all. I'm sorry, where's that at? Yeah, it's.